All right, welcome to our board meeting. This is our regular business meeting for October 16th, 2025. Can we start with roll call? Vice President Choak?
Here.
Member Dorner?
Here.
Member Fay?
Here.
Member Qualcheck? Member Leto?
Here.
Member Nelson?
Here.
President Bennett Kill?
Here. And could we have the pledge that we have the Girl Scout Junior Troop 47459 here to
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, girls. All right, we're going to move on to our board recognition and the spotlight on adaptability from our Portrait of the Graduate. Who do we have doing that?
So we actually have Dora Kamana, all right, Principal Kelly and Vice Principal Grace Becker here. They are our first brave school to work with the Salerno Productions team to do a spotlight on our Portrait of a Graduate, which this month is going to be Adaptability. So take it away, Principal Kelly.
Well, thank you so much for having us. And this was really fun because I think what was very exciting about the project is that we weren't totally sure how it would go and we weren't sure how much the students would be able to tell us about adaptability. And we were very impressed that, you know, given that this was filmed mostly during September, and so they hadn't revisited a lot of it since last year, and they certainly hadn't gone through each characteristic in depth at the start of this year. I was really impressed with what they were able to recall from last year. And we had a lot of fun talking about it with them. And you'll see we filmed it from a few, a few different ways, but the kids were really super impressive, all of them second through fifth grade and what they came up with. All right, so without further ado, here's the video.
Last year, our District 57 students learned about our Portrait of a Graduate. Five essential skills that will help them thrive and reach their full potential. Join us on the journey. First up, adaptable.
My mom got a new job, so I have to wake up early in my new schedule and I have to get ready faster.
This year, I had a new school, a new teacher, and a new classroom.
I was a little scared, but I felt fun when it was my second day.
Now I feel like grateful that I get to actually come to school earlier so that I can play with my friends.
Now when I go to school, I have a great time.
I made new friends and today we have to see my fifth grade buddies.
Adaptable. Being adaptable means going with the flow, even when life throws you a curveball.
I went to Belgium and I couldn't understand everything they were saying. So every time we went out to eat, I had to point to what I wanted because I couldn't read it.
This year, my brother went to middle school and it's a lot different because like this year he wakes up all year, so like when me and my sister are sleeping, he makes lots of noise.
I'm adapting because I'm getting used to the noise.
Our students say adaptability can be tricky, sometimes easy to handle, sometimes hard, kind of like broccoli or math homework.
So we took some deep breaths and did this before social studies. We breathe in, breathe out. We get through our nose and then through our mouth. Yeah, just like that. And then after that, we start social studies.
We just calm down and then we can do whatever, like math, reading.
Being adaptable will help me like get out of fights and helping to break dick fights. So it's going to be easier to adapt when I'm older and easier. And the more I adapt, the more easier it gets.
In District 57, adaptability isn't just a skill, it's a superpower. And our students are ready to use it at school, at home, and everywhere life takes them.
I can be adaptable by going with the flow.
I can be adaptable by staying calm when plans change.
I can be adaptable by working with different people.
I can be adaptable by being flexible with my schedule.
I can be adaptable by finding ways to solve problems.
I could be adaptable by doing new things.
I can be adaptable by trying hard things.
I could be adaptable by getting used to things that I'm used to not getting used to.
Honestly, I just go with the flow and see what that takes me.
Thank you, Lyons Park. Those are always great. Now we have a statement on Principal's Appreciation Day.
Really excited to get to do this one. Friday, October 25th is Principal's Appreciation Day. We couldn't be prouder of the exceptional leaders guiding each of our District 57 schools, Marty Hefner at Westbrook, Katie Kelly at Lyons Park, Dan Ophus at Fairview, and Eric Larson at Lincoln. Our principals treat their schools like second homes, creating welcoming spaces where students, teachers, and staff feel supported and inspired to thrive. They model the very skills we aim to instill in our students through the Portrait of a Graduate, adaptability, empathy, collaboration, resilience, and critical thinking in everything they do. Their leadership goes far beyond managing daily operations. They are mentors, visionaries, and problem solvers who foster a culture of excellence, inclusion, and growth. They inspire students to dream big, teachers to teach with passion, and families to stay deeply engaged in the learning journey. As we celebrate Principal's Appreciation Day, let's take a moment to thank these outstanding leaders for their dedication, their care, and their impact on District 57 community. Thank you to all the principals and our assistant principal.
All right, we're going to move on to the Student Board Members' Report.
Okay, well, tonight is such an exciting night because we are actually going to hear from both our current student board members, Michelle and Josh, but we also are announcing our amazing new members to our Student Board Member Team. So Penelope and Safina are going to be introducing themselves in just a moment, but I think first we're going to start with Michelle and Josh.
This month at school, we learned about adaptability. Adaptability is being able to adjust to different situations and conditions.
This is a, this is an important skill to have, not just in our classrooms, but in our everyday lives. We will need this skill in future jobs and when interacting with other people.
Although construction has limited access to PE recess areas, as students, we appreciate how the school has implemented alternative options such as board games or study hall to make sure we feel supported during this transition period.
While this is a challenging period, we understand that construction is a good, is for a good cause, creating improved facilities that benefit future students, although we wish it could have happened a little bit sooner.
Thank you. And can you do the video now? Because I'm very busy. You can do this. All right, so do you want to give a little segue into what they're watching?
Oh, so this video is the newest construction update about how they put up fencing outside the school so that construction can finally start.
Hi, Lincoln Lions. Josh and Michelle here with your Lincoln Construction News. Today, we're talking with Site Superintendent Matt D. Mr. D, we hear this project is a little personal for you. Why is that?
It is because I went to school here for the first graduating class, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade.
That's awesome. So what exactly does a site superintendent do?
Oversees the project, enforces safety, schedules all the trades, orders, and that's really about it.
Very cool. What's the latest construct, construction update for October?
We are setting up construction fence. We will start excavating the construction road to get into the job site. Then we will be removing the maintenance building and then start staging areas and removing asphalt, removing the soil, and start putting stone down and then removing asphalt. That probably brings us to the end of October.
Sounds like great progress. That's it for this month's Lincoln Construction News.
All right, well, you're going to be hearing more from our amazing student board members, and thank you to Ms. Salerno too for putting together such a great interview video. So without any further ado, unless there's any questions from the report, I am so proud to welcome our new student board members who are going to introduce themselves to the board, and then we'll have an opportunity to do pictures as a group. But I want to give a special shout out to Member Dorner, who gave so generously of his time and talents to help us as a team of four, really to have the difficult decisions around who to recommend as our new seventh graders to join the team. But Safina and Penelope were absolutely exceptional and really stood out in their interviews and their applications, and we really couldn't be more excited for you to meet them tonight. So we can start with Safina if you want to come to the board.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Safina Siddiqui. I'm a seventh grader at Lincoln Middle School. In the past, I have attended both Westbrook and Fairview. I applied to be a, become a student board member because I want to be a bridge in helping my peers reach our board. I feel excited to be a part of this great community. I'm eager to work alongside everyone here. Thank you.
You can stay up here. And then Penelope, come on up. She's going to introduce herself.
Hello, my name is Penelope and I'm in seventh grade at Lincoln. I really wanted to be a student board member to like unite all the voices at Westbrook through there, through Lincoln and try to make a difference at the District 57 for the better. And I, out of school, I enjoy to do lots of like activities, like reading, soccer, swimming, and cross-country. And I enjoy being in the community and helping out and trying to do good.
Awesome. All right, so before we do pictures, is there anything either Member Dorner wants to say on behalf of the interview committee or anything, the board has any questions for our new members?
No, as Dr. Gore stated, it was such a pleasure to serve on the interview committee with Michelle and Josh and Dr. Gore. It was a really difficult choice that we had to make. We had amazing applicants who came from a broad set of perspectives and interests and it was, I know, a really difficult conversation. We had some really sort of heated, not heated, but not heated at all, but I think rich conversations about who would be the best fit. And, and I think Safina and Penelope definitely were, you know, rose to the top of the list, and so we're so excited to have them join our program.
Well, behalf, on behalf of the board, welcome. It's wonderful to have you here. We love having the voices of our students on our board. So congratulations and thank you for being here.
All right, and we're ready for pictures, do you think? All right, come on back.
All right, thank you for our student board members. We appreciate you taking the time. All right, we're going to move on to our Community Comments section, our portion of the evening. The District 57 Board of Education welcomes community participation in an effort to both listen to our stakeholders and keep the meeting moving. I want to remind everyone of our public participation procedures and guidelines, which is available in Board Policy 2:230. Individuals wishing to address the board can do so during the Community Comments portion of the agenda. Individuals should provide their name and limit their comments to three minutes. Please remember that this is not a dialogue between you and the board. The board is in listening mode during this time. Individuals wishing to contact the Board of Education are welcome to do so via the District 57 website under the Board of Education tab. Individuals should behave with respect and civility towards others and abide by Board Policy 8:30, Visitors 2, and conduct on school property. Do we have any comments from the community? Seeing none, we will move forward to our Staff and Superintendent Reports, starting with our Enrollment and Project, Enrollment Projection Report.
So we are joined online with Dr. Cofrin tonight. Dr. Cofrin helped us last year in doing an enrollment study specifically looking at kindergarten as we were starting to have that conversation around construction. And he's back this year to give us that full enrollment study and share his findings. So welcome, Dr. Cofrin. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Excellent, we can. So I'm going to pass it off to you to start your presentation.
Thank you, and I think I'm going to have Mark help me flip through the slides. Is that, is that, is that correct?
Absolutely, yeah. Just tell him when you need the next slide.
Okay, so let's, let's go to next slide.
Are you seeing the project summary up on the screen?
Okay, I can't see the screen, but I've got, I've got the slides in front of me. So yes, this is the project summary slide. The purpose of, of this, this, this update, which is also a development project, was to extend the district's study of births and kindergarten enrollments by, by developing a complete K through eight enrollment projection model. And last year, what the, the task, my task was to take and assess the utility of, of counting births and using those births to project out what kindergarten enrollments would be. Based upon that result, the district decided to, well, let's go ahead and take and using the same methodology, let's extend that through four grades one through eight. So using the, the base mapping that I developed for the, the initial study, I geocoded births that the district obtained from the Illinois Department of Public Health for calendar years 22 and 23. These were coded through two kindergarten class cohorts and provided a, and provided an empirical base for looking at enrollments at the kindergarten level through school year 29 through 30. The second part of this was to generate enrollment projections for the next five school years, and to do this, using essentially the same methodology, I took and obtained from the school district, oh, about 20,000 or so student records. We coded these to classes and for the purpose of projecting, I developed cohort survival ratios that allowed me to project out from the last known year of enrollments through, once again, school year 29 and 30. Also, as part of the, the process and to provide the district with a useful tool, although I projected K through eight for residents in both Fairview and Lyons Park, using those as tabulation areas, I rolled up the enrollment totals for Westbrook and for Fairview and Lyons Park for grades two through five, and also for Lincoln, grades six through eight. If anybody would be interested in looking at where the, where the births or with, where the enrollments are coming from for either Fairview or Lyons Park or from Lincoln, that data is available for grades K through eight for each of the two main tabulation areas in the district. Let's go to the next one. And what this does is this shows you the, the results of taking live birth records that, again, the district was able to obtain from the Illinois Department of Public Health and to geocode those to the base map. This base map was provided in our last study, and as you can see, we are projecting out to 2930, which is a tentative projection of what the number of births would be, given a, given a multiplier essentially of three and using the last four months of calendar year 2023. The data itself is available in the next slide, which again provides for the two tabulation areas, Fairview and Lynx Park, the numbers that were counted for each of the years from 2017 through 2029, 2030 kindergarten cohorts. And again, this is going back to 2011 and once again, using the, the calendar year data through 2023 to create those counts for kindergarten cohorts are essentially the, the number of kids that would be eligible to attend kindergarten in each of those school years. Let's go to the next one. And from that and using the enrollment totals, I was able to take and project total enrollment for the district, looking back to 2017. And again, this is by school year through 2024, 25, and also projecting out what I would expect the enrollments to be in 2029, 30. Again, this is information that's based on live birth information and also the number of kids that are currently in the school system by grade. Toward the next slide. If you were to take a look at the, the graph, you'd see that enrollment stabilized in 2024 at the 2023 level with, with essentially the same enrollments. I kind of expect the, the high projection series and the snapshot projection series to be the better or more credible trend lines for projecting out what total enrollments are going to be in 2029, 2030. These data indicate that the more likely range is going to be between 2,046 students and 2,145 students in 2029, 30, and that reflects the total number of students in grades K through eight. Next slide. And again, rolling up the totals of K through eight projections for Lyons Park and Fairview tabulation areas, for K1 enrollments, this is the resulting graph for Westbrook. As you can see from this particular graph, there was a, a sliding of enrollments between 2019 and 2022 due to the COVID-19, probably these, these COVID-19 impacts. What was not expected was the decline between 2022 and 2023 down to a level that was lower than what had been previously observed, and that level stuck at the same level in 2024, 25. However, if we go to the next slide, you can see that it appears that these enrollments have stabilized in 2023 and 24, and based on the last two years of enrollments and births, I would expect that enrollments will likely increase by about 25 students in 2029 and 2030. And again, that's based on the total number of births that were counted through calendar Next slide. Looking at the profiles of Fairview and Lyons Park for enrollments in grades two through five, you can see that the, the two, the two graphs are, are different. In the projection window, you can see that the snapshot projection, the high projection series is looking at enrollments that are trending up in the Fairview Resident Enrollment Series, whereas in Lyons Park, it looks like the, the enrollments are trending slightly downward between now and the end of the decade in 2029, 30. And here's a lot of verbiage on the next slide about the data that's in those two graphs. The enrollment projection profile, as I mentioned, are different for Fairview and Lyons Park. The snapshot projection, which is a, if you recall from last year, is based on two consecutive years of enrollments only. It, it shows that in the Fairview area, it bends sharply upward after the 25, 26 school year and largely on the strength of 2023 and 2024 enrollments in, resident enrollments in the Fairview area. More likely that Fairview resident enrollments will range between 507 and 601 students in 2029, 30, assuming that, once again, the current trends over the next two years continue, and that's in graph four. Lyons Park area experienced an increase in enrollments during the COVID pandemic timeframe, but then declined in 2021 and 2022, which is in graph five. The, the enrollment projections are, the enrollments pretty much stayed the same in 2022 and 2023, but then continued to decline in 2024 in the Lyons Park area. And again, these are totals for grades two through five. With the decline in 2024 enrollments, I would expect that Lyons Park enrollments will continue to decline through 2028 before edging slightly upward in 2029, 2030. And I would expect Lyons Park enrollments to range between 339 and 357 students in 2029 and 30 using the mid snapshot projection series. Next slide, please. And taking a look at total enrollments in grades six through eight, you can see that between 2017 and 2024, the trend line was pretty, pretty stable. There was really no COVID impact to speak of. There was really no COVID impact to speak of in 2019 through 2021. There was a little bit of a blip in 2023, 24, and that was probably due to smaller that were affected by the COVID pandemic in the earlier years, in the elementary years. And from that data and also looking at numbers of enrollments in 2024, I would expect that, again, using the snapshot projection, that the enrollments will pretty much stay the same. They're going to edge up slightly, looking at the high projection series, and I would expect the snapshot and the high projection series to be to be the better tools to use to project enrollments in grades six through eight. As you can see, the 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 high projection series is really a weighted average of cohort survival ratios that are used to project out enrollments, and the snapshot is the is the result of taking the last two succeeding years of enrollments and developing cohort survival ratios and moving those out into the projection window. Next slide, please. So here, the findings summarized in bullet form, they were not, you can see that the middle school enrollments were not impacted significantly by the COVID pandemic, although there were, there was a slight dip in enrollments, probably due to the impact experienced in the elementary grades earlier. The middle school impact, student enrollment stayed steadily steady from 2018 through 2022 before dipping a little bit in 2023. They bounced back in 2024 and expect that they'll stay at, if not increase slightly, over the next three school years. Next slide, please. So having gone through and taking a look at, again, over 20,000 records, assembling these by by classes or what we call cohorts, taking a look at birth data over the last 11 years, these are the findings coming out of this study and also the data that was generated as part of this effort. Going forward, I would strongly recommend, and I would love to take a look at the 2025 student address records that would be geocoded and would be compared to the projections that were made for 2025. This would update the projection model, adding those student records to to the the data that we currently have. I'd like to be able to compare these projections to the actual 2025 enrollments to see if I'm on track or to see if there are any significant departures. Also, it'd be interesting to see which trend line would be better in projecting out the enrollments over the next four or so years. I'd like to be able to take and using 2024 births when they become available, I would love to take these and project out to 2030, 31, using births. Right now, the only thing that I can do is to use averages of births, which, again, are are not empirically derived, but simply averages that would be considered to be placeholders in the projection model. But again, as 2024 birthday become available, we would geocode these and add them to the projection model. And when I mentioned geocoding, I'm really kind of talking about address matching, both not only your student data, but also the birth date. This is this is something that's a little bit more exacting and a little bit better of a predictor in assembling projections than it would be to simply take averages or to take a look at building counts. The data from 2024 would be used to finalize the 2029 projections of births that are currently in the projection model and provide empirical data for a projection of what the class size would be in, the kindergarten class size would be in 2030, 2031. Now, with that, I move to the last slide, which, again, is a question comments slide. I'd be more than happy to entertain the questions or comments from the board.
Thank you, Dr. Cofrin. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Cofrin. I have a few questions, maybe two are for our admin, but the one for you, obviously, the the challenge with any kind of modeling like this is the factors that are changing, right? And so, obviously, with our move to full day kindergarten, there's a, you could make a pretty good assumption that the, I think you call it the cohort survival ratio between birth and K is is almost certainly to go up, right? Because there are, and I'm, we probably even updated on this, I'm sure there are kids who are born in the district and would otherwise attend kindergarten at Westbrook but for the fact that it hasn't been full day kindergarten up till today, right? So when that changes, that rate should go up. I don't know, I have no idea how much, but is there a way to account for that in this model?
Absolutely. That's why, and parenthetically, I'd like to, I'd like to suggest this at the, you know, at the front end, and that is, it's important to to include and to keep the projections current. The cohort survival ratios are part of, I think they're part of the report, if I'm not mistaken.
Yep, they are. Table two in the appendix, yep.
Right. If we if we go to the report and if we take a look at, I'm gonna try to pull that up real quick. And this would be, no, it's not it. This would be. I'm looking at cohort survival ratios by grade centers. This would be table two?
Yes.
And what those represent for the high, mid, low, and snapshot projections are the cohort survival ratios, which are very simply, for the snapshot, the the current enrollments divided by the total number of births that were counted for that particular cohort. So for Westbrook and the snapshot projection, the B to K cohort survival ratio is 0.669, or roughly 67% of births that were counted and coded to to the 2024 or 2023 kindergarten cohort attended kindergarten programming in the district, which means that roughly 1 minus 0.67 is a little bit more than 30% of the the eligible babies born in the district were not attending kindergarten. Okay? So as as you go to full day kindergarten, I would I would certainly expect those numbers to go up. And and I make that assumption based on the 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 next line of cohort survival ratios, where over 37% of the number of kids that were attending kindergarten are moving into first grade. Do you see how that works?
Yes.
Okay. The, again, the the data for Fairview and Lyons Park for grades one to two through four to five follow the same follow the same algorithm where you, for the snapshot series, it's basically the last two years of enrollments. For the high, mid, and low, it's the last five years of enrollments that go into creating these these cohort survival ratios. So just to just to take, you know, the last line, which is the cohort survival ratios for Lincoln Middle School for grades seven through eight, in last year, roughly 2% more students from grade seven moved into grade eight. And looking at the high, mid, and low projection series, that pretty much is the same number across the three different projection scenarios.
Is it, is it, so if I look at the snapshot for the K to one survival ratio, does that, am I interpreting this right? Does that, that means that that there are 38% or basically 138% of the kindergarten cohort shows up in first grade?
The birth cohort.
Yeah, that's what I mean, sorry. The birth cohort.
Right. These would be births to actual kindergarten enrollment, and what that 1.37 represents is that if it were 100% or 1.000, it would be the same number of births that are found six years later in your September kindergarten enrollments. What this is telling us is that there's, for K to, I'm sorry, for K to one, there are essentially 37, the class size is 37% larger in first grade than what was what was counted or what was found in the previous kindergarten class year. So when I'm looking at 1.37, it's it's that class size in first grade was 37% larger than the the number of kindergarteners in the preceding grade.
Right, which which is pretty fascinating because I would interpret that as, yes, there are, there are fewer members of that cohort attending kindergarten at Westbrook, but then most of them are moving to Westbrook for first grade, despite not having attended kindergarten there.
That's exactly, that's exactly what's going on here.
Okay, that, yeah, because, oh, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, what that also tells you is that there's, you know, you were, you were making the comment about the size of the first grade class, which is 37% greater than the size of the previous kindergarten class, that there's plenty of, that because of the size of the difference, that there is quite a bit of a difference in in accommodating students if you were to go to a full, full day kindergarten. In other words, there would be, your capture rate would be higher, I would expect to be higher than roughly the 67% that it currently stands at now.
Yeah, actually, I I would theorize that the B to K number would go up and the K to one number would come down. They'd both.
That's correct.
They both coalesce around one. So, and the reason I'm asking this question is, my concern is, when we offer full day kindergarten, are we suddenly going to have an inrush of kids who were not only attending kindergarten somewhere else, but then staying at that school all the way, at least maybe through first, if not further? And if if those kids suddenly all attend District 57, which would be wonderful, but that could be an influx of kids we're not expecting and planning for, right? And what could that do? But but your, at least this projection, would suggest that is not the case today, at least by and large, not the case today.
Yeah, I'd agree with that.
Okay.
The the, again, we can get, we can get further into the weeds and talk about how we can crystal ball gaze into what are some of the variables that might bring more households with preschool kids into the district, those that are not accounted for by births. But generally speaking, based on simply births and the number of kids that are currently in kindergarten, you can expect a plus up of about 38% looking at the number, the size of the kindergarten class to attend first grade.
Yep.
Now, I would, I would also agree with you that that if you you take a look at, and again, they they pretty much move around one, and that that is correct, that the the number of, are the cohort survival ratio for the birth through K going to full day kindergarten, if that does increase, then certainly it will lower the cohort survival ratio for K to one, which would be easier to manage, I think, from an administrative standpoint than than looking at a 37% or 38% plus up of the following year.
Right, yes. If the K to one number snapshot today was one, then I would be concerned that with full day kindergarten, the B to K number's going to go up, and then it's likely that the other number's going to go up as well. But, all right, no, thank you very much. This is really fascinating stuff, very cool. Two more quick questions, sorry, probably more for Dr. Gore and Jason, but I was really fascinated looking at the projected trends of Fairview and Lyons Park. I mean, I've always just thought of them as, you know, they're basically the same size school, same number of students, and what what do we do if that actually comes true? I mean, if if, I assume Fairview is not built to handle 601 kids.
Right.
I'll jump in.
Well, the easiest answer to that question is that we we move the boundaries.
That's where I was going to get it, but.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump in, Dr. Cofrin, if that's all right. Sorry.
And by the way, the way in which we do this is is it's all data driven and it's all there for public comment and for, you know, for for public consideration. Right now, I have over 20,000 student records from your history dating back to 2011. I have those records that are on a map, okay? So for each of the, what I call the tabulation areas of Fairview and Lyons Park, I can take and I can cut up those polygons to reflect what many would consider to be planning areas. And what we could do is we could see how moving one neighborhood or one block of students from one attendance area to another might be used to to come up with a, strike a better balance of total enrollments, and we can do that by grade. So all of this feeds into the possibility of of using, again, what was, what was started in the benchmark study and what has been furthered with this particular study to come up with a way of assessing the impacts of of boundary changes, if you want to go that route.
And I think, you know, thank you, Dr. Cofrin. I think a couple other things, too, is I think when we look at projections, we also know that, and we talked about it with financial projections in January, that as you look further out, it's less reliable. So something we're obviously going to do is continue to watch closely to see how this goes. I think there's a lot of different options we can talk about as well. We can look at district programming and does that make sense and which school that's at and and rooms there. I do think when we start talking about boundaries, that's obviously a large, big conversation that we want to have with lots of input, and so I think we're gonna, you know, watch this closely and see where it goes and see see what happens. I think we also, you know, we try to build in as much as we can flexibility within schools, too. So I'll throw out, like, for example, right now at Westbrook and Lincoln with the new construction, we have planned for a certain amount of classrooms. We also, at both schools, have planned for some flexible spaces that can be used in different ways. At Westbrook, for example, there's two classrooms that'll have a door, a wall going down the middle. It can be used for small group space, it can be used as a full classroom. And so depending on the numbers, and sometimes they go up and down and throughout the years, but we want to be able to have that flexible space, so we're planning in that way as well. But I think it's a good question to ask. It's definitely, when you look at that data, you say, oh, let's let's keep an eye on that, and that's what we'll do as we as we kind of go forward.
How wide would the disparity have to get until we'd really have to start talking, not necessarily about change of boundaries, but just about doing something different? I mean, what what would be the trigger point to, I don't know if you have that answer, it's maybe a hard question.
Yeah, I think, and I know Dr. Gore's ready to answer, too. My only thing I'd say, too, is I think it it could probably be two different conversations. One is disparity between the two buildings, but also it's just about room in the building. So, you know, it could be Lyons Park's here and Fairview's here, but we're okay with it because. with it because there are, there's classroom space there. So I think that's one conversation. But then there can be a conversation of, oh, if there's this many kids here, again, if classroom size is the same, then is that okay? That's a conversation to have.
Well, I'd like to also add that, again, the cohort survival ratios by grade centers are exactly that, and the cohort survival ratios have been calculated for what I'd like to call, once again, the tabulation area, that, that major, you know, line drawn across the district and down, I think either a railroad track or a highway, if I recall correctly. But again, all of the, all of the data has been assembled for grades K through eight, and also cohort survival ratios for grades K through eight by these tabulation areas, so that, you know, you can go back and you can take a look at the number of, the number of kindergarteners that you would expect out of the, the Fairview area or the Lincoln Park area. You can also see that there's quite a bit of a difference between the total number of births coming out of Fairview and Lincoln Park. If you were to scroll up to the table number one, those are the birth counts by tabulation area and kindergarten cohort years, you can see that there is quite a bit of a difference between the two. So that's going to translate into larger, larger kindergarten class sizes in Fairview. And if you do move to all day kindergarten, I would expect that, that, again, those, those differences would remain unless you decided to, to move boundaries around, so.
The, the other thing I would add is, and what will be interesting to watch, is all the new construction that's happening in the Lyons Park boundary, you know, everything within the TIF. We know that, I think last year we had six students living in the TIF, and I expect that number to go up as more residences are going up, and so we'll see, will these numbers stay? Will we start seeing a movement a little bit more towards Lyons Park?
We did our part, we moved from the Fairview side.
Nice job.
Everyone just has to do that. Last, real quick question, remind me again what the new Lincoln is built for?
Eight hundred fifty.
Eight fifty, okay.
Yes.
For anyone who may be wondering, watching the projection, hmm, is the new Lincoln built to, so even in the, the high, really conservative projection, the new Lincoln will house easily that number of students?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Just, just another comment, there was a question from a board member about the, the dots that were outside of the district's boundaries in that map that I provided. There were roughly, over the last 10 years, there were anywhere from 15 to 20 students or so that came from outside of the district. The total enrollment projections are for, and, and because I, there's no way to assess where they were going to go to school, the total enrollment projections include both the cohort projections as well as a separate projection of the number of students that live outside or reside outside of the, the district's boundary. So if you see any differences between the total numbers and the numbers that you would add up from Lyons Park and Fairview, it's because of the, the addition of 19 or 20 or so students that reside outside.
Thank you, Dr. Cofrin.
Oh, my pleasure, thank you, thank you for, for your attention, and I really appreciated the, the opportunity to present, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, let's move on to the fiscal year 2025 audit presentation. Dr. Case?
Excellent, from looking to the future to looking a little bit to the past, I'm going to invite John Upperson up from Miller Cooper, who performed our audit for fiscal year 25.
Good evening, thanks again, Jason, for introducing me. The package that you guys received was labeled as an incomplete work product, and what that really meant was that all the numbers have been adjusted, they've been through my review, but they hadn't gone through our quality control review. I'm happy to report that that has now happened since the time that you had received it in your board packet to now, so a formal draft has been issued, and we're not anticipating any changes, and there were no significant changes within the, the document that you had reviewed. So I'm not going to go over the whole 114-page document, will be here forever, so I'm just going to highlight a few areas, just to give you sort of a refresher on what some of the statements look like. You don't have to follow along, but just to get an idea, and then if you have questions at the end, we can, we can go through those. So the financial report itself, again, is, is 114 pages long, it does not contain the opinion as of now, we reserve our right to change that up until the point in time we issue the report, but as of now, we're prepared to issue a clean opinion, which is an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance that we can provide, which means that everything that we found is materially stated in all material respects, it's all good, it's all good to go. The next page that I always like to refer people to, beginning on page six, is the management discussion analysis, and this is a good summary of a lot of the good information that's within the financial report, to give you sort of a high-level summary of what you're going to see once you dive further into the details. It really does sometimes give you everything you're going to need to know without having to see everything behind it. Beginning on page 16 is the statement of net position, and this is basically, takes all your funds, puts them together, and then certain items such as long-term debt and capital assets that normally would be considered expenditures on the fund level that you see on a monthly basis, they get capitalized and depreciated for all your capital assets, and your debt would be a liability and runoff as payments are made, those liabilities would be reduced. On page 17 is sort of an income statement, for those of you who looked at a, a public company financial statement, and this is effectively all the revenues and expenses that the district had, again, on that same basis of accounting, when you smooshed all the funds together and looked at everything on sort of a government-wide basis. There is one adjustment in here related to a new accounting pronouncement, so it's brand new this year, so you wouldn't have seen it in the past, that resulted in a $5.6 million adjustment or an additional liability. That relates to GAZB, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, went and reevaluated compensated absences and tried to determine when certain compensated absences should be presented as liabilities versus when they should not. The major change came with how sick leave is accounted for, so the majority of the time, teachers and IMF employees are allowed to contribute excess sick time that they've accumulated toward pension credit, but they are also, at some point, taking some of the sick time that they've earned and taking it over their career path. So you have to do some estimates based upon, how much do they have in their bank now that they're going to use over a future period in time. So it, it's a, it's a significant estimate, it's very high-level, it's not presented on the fund level, you won't see it on a day-to-day, I'm sorry, month-to-month basis in your financial statements, no different than the pension and the other post-employment benefits that came into play a few years ago. I think, if you ask my opinion, it's more of presenting more of a sticker shock of looking at what is out there that may not be sort of incorporated on a day-to-day basis, but if you have any further questions, we can go over it a little bit more detail in a bit. Then on page 18, you're going to see your governmental funds balance sheet, so this is very similar to what you see on a monthly basis, so it presents each of the individual funds, all of their assets and liabilities. At year-end, what you don't typically see on your monthly statements is like accounts payable and other accrual-type items, those are there and presented sort of only on an annual basis. Beginning on page 21 is sort of, again, your income statements for the fund level, so it presents all of your revenues, expenditures, and other financing sources and uses by fund. And in between those schedules, you're going to see reconciliations that bridge the gap between the two different types of statements and what the differences really are. That goes line by line and details them out. Beginning on page 25 is the notes to the financial statements, so this contains a lot of summarized financial information, I'm sorry, detailed financial information that is otherwise summarized and presented on the face of the financial statements, so a lot of really good policy-related information, and additional documentation of how the numbers were derived, especially when it comes to significant estimates such as pension liabilities and other post-employment benefit liabilities. Beginning on page 72 and the rest of the report are sort of supplemental schedules, so they include, you know, budget-to-actual comparison schedules, multi-year pension-related information, a lot of good statistical information that are, is required to be presented within the financial statements. I'm going to move on to the letters real quick, and I say letters because ordinarily you'd receive two letters, one that's considered a controlled efficiency letter and one that's considered a required communication to the board letter. I'm happy to report this year, we do not have a controlled efficiency letter, because during our, our procedures, we gained an understanding of internal control, and throughout all of our testing, we didn't find anything that warranted communication of control matters or deficiencies that need to get reported. So that's a really good thing, I think it's the first time we've had that, probably in the last five or seven years, I can't remember when, but it's not there. So kudos to Jason and his team for really honing in and making sure that that was, we were well, well-prepared this year. So the other letter that we do have is our required communication letter, and this goes over sort of what our responsibilities are, which is what our standards are that we have to follow, the fact that we have to be independent with respect to the district in all material respects. It goes through also some new accounting pronouncements that are effective this year, one of which I went over, the GAZB 101 related to compensated absences, and then some that will be effective for future years. I don't really see any other ones having any significant or material impacts in the next couple of years, but again, we always have to evaluate based upon how the interpretations are rolled out, how they will impact the district, but as of now, I don't see any more significant ones that will affect you in the future. We're also required to communicate to you any material corrected misstatements that we had, we had various adjustments that we made, but nothing that we would consider material, they were just sort of within the scope of the audit that we performed, to get the books and records up to where we needed to report to. In addition, we're required to report any uncorrected misstatements, so those that are not significant, that we say we could just pass on because they don't really interfere with a user's view of a financial statement, we didn't have any this year as well, you will see a table in there, but that's sort of just the reversal effect of something we found last year, when it has an effect one year, it then reverses and has an opposite effect the next year, but nothing to be concerned with. And then within here, ordinarily, this would be in our sort of controlled efficiency letter, sort of a recommendation, is sort of a standard data security and technology risk, I guess, primer that lets everybody know that it's an ever-changing environment and you have to continue to evaluate and, and determine where you might have vulnerabilities within your IT systems. With that, does anybody have any questions?
No, thank you very much, appreciate you making an opaque subject a little bit clearer.
Sure, have a great evening.
Thank you. And Dr. Case, thank you for all your good work. All right, we'll move on to our superintendent goals.
Thank you, in your board packets, you have the October updates for the superintendent goals, and be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions, comments? Go ahead.
I had just one question, Dr. Gore, for the goal 1D. I'm not, we, so you have here the math growth on spring MAP as the, one of the metrics with both? I'm just curious why I didn't, unless I'm missing it, I don't see ELA on here, are we, or reading it? Is that on?
That's an error, but it is, it should be on there, but we don't have that data because it would also be pending spring data, but I will be sure to update that as a placeholder for the next update.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, if we were going to pick one or the other, reading would seem to be the one we'd want to pick, right? Because that's where we have the most room for growth, at least based on the last.
But based on last month's meeting, the feedback was to have both, so I'll, I'll be sure to include that as a placeholder for the update, thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
Yeah.
And then I just have one question about the similar ones, I know it's pending spring data, is there any updates on kind of what is happening around the fall? But like, I assume MAP's been taken.
Yes, so I believe Dr. Vonderhar next month will be providing a presentation to the board for the fall data, that, that data is in and has been reviewed by school-level teams and district-level teams, as well as data-level support meetings, both at the administration level as well as the teacher level and staff level. So in next month's presentation, Dr. Vonderhar will present that data. I'm happy to also include that preliminary fall data in the updates as well, so that there's a reference to kind of where we're starting and where we're ending, absolutely.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful, just as we're thinking about.
Absolutely.
Like the goal of supporting the district where it's needed.
Yes.
If we see something in there, I think it's important.
Absolutely, yep.
Yep, okay, awesome, thank you.
Any other questions? This one might be for Dr. Vonderhar, with regard to the math curriculum pilot. I know when we last looked at the data, there was at least some consensus about the progress that had been made with our current curriculum, and I thought at that point you had mentioned that one of the curricula that was being considered was basically an updated version of what we use now, but I wasn't certain that that was one that was listed, so I just wanted to confirm.
Are you looking at elementary? Right, yes. Math in Focus is the updated one, so Math in Focus 2020, that is one of the ones that we will be piloting. And then, like Dr. Gore shared, in November, I'll provide an update there regarding our data, and there were some changes with MAP, they updated their norms, so we did see some changes based on kind of percentiles that I presented in the summer, so I'll share that information as well. The Math in Focus is one of the ones that we will be piloting, is that now listed on there, we can update that if it's not?
I guess I didn't see anything that was immediately familiar to me as something that, you know, we had been using already, so I just wanted to confirm that I hadn't misunderstood you when you talked about it before, because I know, I think I was among the board members who felt really strongly about if it's not broke, don't fix it, right? If we have something that's working and that's helping our students grow in this area that we realized we were behind in with, you know, all of the COVID impact and all of that, I would much rather devote our efforts and energy to something else.
And I think, as I'm thinking about the timeline, so as an October update, we are finishing our first pilot eye-ready and moving to our next one illustrative math, and then Math in Focus is going to be the third one, so that is likely why you don't see it on there.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Any other questions? No, thank you, Dr. Vonderhar, thank you, Mary.
I just want to also reiterate my praise to Dr. Case and his team, because they really have been so focused on, you know, getting better and better, and I thought that was so telling that our auditors were able to declare that that level of the absence of any of the findings is such a significant milestone for this department, our district, and just the efforts of the intentionalness of Jason and his team to really get stronger and stronger, so it's a huge, it's a huge celebration to their work and credit.
Well done, Dr. Case.
And we'll stick with you for the budget calendar.
And I will just say, I, truly a team effort, I think my team, after last year's audit, right away rolled up their sleeves, this isn't something that can happen at the end of the year and say, okay, the audit's here, now let's do it. It, it happens all year where you're getting ready, you're preparing, you're keeping good data, and making sure we're doing the right thing, so it was, it was a really hard and good work that the, that the team did, so I appreciate everything that they worked on. And with that, we'll talk about the budget calendar. So every year, we approve a budget calendar, you've seen it referenced when we talked about the budget in June, in July, August, all those months, and so it looks very similar to the other years, we really will hit the ground running starting in the spring after the personnel plan is approved, and it'll be finalized by September, so it's there for approval. Or really to share, sorry, I shouldn't say for approval.
Does anybody have any questions about the budget calendar? Thank you, Dr. Case, moving on to our Building Brighter Futures update.
Excellent, so I, I think we started the meeting talking about adaptable, and I really appreciate what Josh and Michelle said about the students' understanding and the need to be adaptable as fencing was going up, and I appreciate the staff as we've jumped into construction this week. So as, first, let's talk about our celebration, I thought it was great, the groundbreaking, I want to thank STR and Nicholas for all they did to have an amazing groundbreaking, also the band, as you can see in the picture, did an amazing job, I think, performing, really appreciated all the words that were said, and just exciting, exciting times, I think, I think really started that excitement and got us ready for construction. And as you can see on the second slide, we've now jumped into construction, it looks a little bit less exciting, but we, fencing's been
It looks a little bit less exciting, but we, fencing's been going up, starting last week and this week. Unfortunately, we have taken down some trees, but know that there will be more trees planted at the end. We just need some space to be able to maneuver around, but the construction company has been doing a great job of getting fencing up. We're trying to be as proactive as possible in letting people know exactly what's going on, but we hope that we plan for the maintenance shed to be coming down in the next couple of weeks, and then they're going to be starting to take that topsoil off and digging holes and getting ready to go. So just an exciting time for Lincoln. Quick update about Westbrook. Westbrook, actually, they were planning on starting some work in winter break, but they're actually going to come in a little bit over Thanksgiving as well to do some of that pre-electrical work that we've talked about. We went out for bid early on that, and then that will be done inside over Thanksgiving and winter break, and then in spring break, they're going to do the exterior work for that, getting ready for the construction that'll start most likely in the summer. Questions about anything with construction or anything else?
No. Thank you, Dr. Case.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to our FOIA reports. Snuck up on me this time. Oh, we have received six FOIA requests between September 20th and October 14, 2025. The responses have been sent diligently by our department, and the detailed report is available in the board packet. Thank you, Mr. Page. Okay, let's move on to the consent agenda, and the bills were reviewed by Ray. How's everything look?
Despite my attempt to find something problematic, I was thwarted by Dr. Case. Everything looked tip-top.
Excellent. All right, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Member Fay?
Yes.
Member Leto?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Vice President Choak?
Yes.
Member Dorner?
Yes.
President Bennett Kill?
Yes.
All right, we've come to our second time for community comments. Do we have any comments from the community? Now, seeing none, we'll move on to our news, new action, our new business, to approve the fiscal year 2025 audit. May I have a motion to approve the fiscal year 2025 audit? So moved. Second. Member Leto?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Vice President Choak?
Yes.
Member Dorner?
Yes.
Member Fay?
Yes.
President Bennett Kill?
Yes.
All right, now we're moving on to communications from our board members, starting with the NSSEO report from Chris.
Thank you, Corinne. NSSEO governing board met on Wednesday, October 8th. There were several items. You all saw a lengthy email from me on the progress of our Articles of Agreement revision. I will just paraphrase some of that here for the community and anyone watching. I think we're actually in a really good place with this now. As you will recall me saying, there was a little bit of, you know, just concern amongst many of the governing board members about, you know, the fact that this proposed operational board was not terribly well-defined in the Articles of Agreement, and, you know, many of us, and I know all of us kind of agreed with this, that, well, geez, you know, how can we vote to approve something knowing that this is a pretty big change and we're not really sure what the operational board is going to be responsible for? So where we've, we kind of landed with this is Dr. Schnur had created kind of a proposed responsibility matrix where it would say, here are all the things that the governing board does today, or here are all the things that NSSEO admin in the governing board does today, here's the current state, and here's the proposed future state. And she shared that with the superintendents council, of which Dr. Gore is obviously part, and their meeting on October 1st, and, which was a really good discussion, as I heard. And where they've kind of landed with all this is that while it is clear that the superintendents clearly want a voice in what goes on at NSSEO, as they should, given that we're a co-op, ultimately, there really wasn't a desire amongst that group to take on any of the responsibilities that are, that currently rest with the governing board. You know, so for example, you know, there was a proposal at one time, well, the operational board will approve expenditures below a certain amount. There didn't seem to be any appetite amongst the superintendents to do that. There was a proposal at one point that the operational board would have a role in, you know, actually being part of the, any future superintendent hiring, and, you know, they kind of said, well, we'd like to maybe be on the interview committee, but we really don't need to be, you know, a major part of that. And so where this has kind of landed is that all of the major decisions regarding expenditures of taxpayer dollars, any decisions on hiring and evaluating the superintendent, any role in approving collective bargaining agreements with the unions, any decisions on contracts, those will all stay with the governing board. Now that said, the, the operational board, should the articles go forward, would have a say in making recommendations to the governing board, in having, you know, opinions on things like when the budget gets routed from the finance committee before it gets to the governing board, the operational board would weigh in, say, yes, this makes sense, no, it doesn't. So, so really, where, where this is all ending up, the RMS of all this, is that the proposed operational board now would really serve as an advisory role, not one that would actually be formally voting on things. And that's what Dr. Schnur brought back to the governing board in our meeting, and, and all of us on the governing board said, well, that sounds great. That's kind of exactly where we were hoping this would land, and now it seems like that is where it's landing. Now, the, the sticking point with that, so great, we all agree with that, the articles as they exist today do not say that, right? They are extremely ambiguous on what the operational board will do, and we all acknowledge that. So the plan is to update the draft articles much more clearly spelling out the proposed role of this new operational board, as I just described it, and do that relatively quickly, such that in our next meeting, the governing board's next meeting on November 5th, I want to say, November 5th, had it in front of me here, November 5th, we would, we would see the new draft articles with all of this new text in there, and the governing board at that time would vote to say, yes, we want to take this to our member district boards, and then have our member district boards vote in our November meetings, which for us would be the 18th, 18th of November, I think? Is that right? Okay. We would then vote on November 18th whether, as a district, we want to ratify the proposed articles, and then the governing board in our December meeting would formally vote to ratify them. So what I will do is, as soon as these new article, as the new, as soon as the new draft is drafted, I will send that to all of you for your review and give you plenty of time to look it over before our November 18th meeting. And as I've done before, if you have questions, or what does this mean, or I'm not sure I agree with this, we can discuss that in advance of our November meeting. But then the goal would be at our next meeting to vote as a board to, for me, to then vote to ratify the articles in our December governing board meeting. I hope I said all that right, but, does that make sense? Any questions on that? I, I think this, honestly, I, and I sort of wish we had gotten here sooner, but I think this is sort of what I, and I think others, had sort of hoped for and intended all along, which is to provide an additional opportunity for the superintendents to have a voice without interrupting or, or putting at risk the governance and oversight responsibilities that the governing board has and should have. So, so I actually think this is a really good place that we've gotten to. Maybe took a little longer than we wanted, but, but I think we're in a good place now. And with that, the only other short update I have is just a reminder, Harvest Fest at Sunrise Lake, always a great time, is Saturday, November 1st, from 11 to 3:00. So if you can make it, please make it. Lots of fun. Big leaf piles for your kids to jump in. And that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Can we move on to the Ed Foundation?
No big Ed Foundation update, other than they did have, they ended up canceling the fall event, but they did have a raffle of piece that went out, and so I know that was being bid on. I was getting email updates, but I'm not sure how that went yet. There is a meeting next week, yes, from, for the Ed Foundation, so I will learn more. But that is what's happening at the Ed Foundation.
Thank you. So PTO reports, let's start with Westbrook.
Westbrook has not yet met since the last meeting. Our meeting is this Monday, the 20th. There was a request for donations of candy, so I will bring that five-pound bag of individually-wrapped chocolates for the trunk-or-treat, because the people who are, who are decorating the cars are doing a sufficient amount of work, and the rest of us should help out by donating the candy, so they don't have to do both. So, so that was good. It's exciting.
Thanks, Pam. And our Fairview rep is not here today, so Lyons Park?
Yes, Lyons Park. They had their last, or their most recent meeting was on October 6th. They were able to report back that our Lyons Park's largest fundraiser for the PTO, the Roar and Run, they exceeded their budget on money raised, so that was wonderful. And so the PTO has started to already discuss, you know, additional projects and in communication with the school about any extra products that could get funded from that additional funding from the Roar and Run, so that was wonderful. Additionally, they had a third playdate at the Ball Factory for their second graders, so their new second graders at Lyons Park. And they were also discussing setting up like a joint playdate with the Fairview second graders, just to kind of start to make those connections between the two schools. Additionally, I know room reps were hard at work. They're finishing up the planning details for the Halloween parties, and the, there was also some conversation, and actually I heard this as well, that I believe the construction fencing around the Lyons Recreation Center is going to be going up here in the next week or two, or very soon, maybe even this week. They thought it was going to be around October 20th, but again, the construction fencing's going to go up around the Lyons Recreation Center, and just, it didn't seem like there was going to be necessarily any impact to the spaces that are available to the students at the school, but just something to know as they are neighbors. And then the last thing is that the next meeting is on Monday, November 3rd, at Lyons Park School.
Thank you. We have a Lincoln report?
We do not. They have their meeting on Monday as well, so when we come together in November, I will have two Lincoln, PTO meetings to tell you about.
Thanks, Kim. All right, so board president report. So we received the 2025 IASB Resolutions Committee Report Packet last month, and so we need to, you should review that, which will be discussed at the November board meeting. Also, board members who are interested in serving as a delegate for the 2025 IASB Delegate Assembly will be asked, or can you ask, excuse me, if you are interested in being the delegate, you can let me know by this coming Monday, and we will, we'll decide on that. A delegate and an alternate will be decided. And my other item is a piece of sad, happy news. Tonight, we take a moment to recognize and celebrate the contributions of our colleague and friend, Jennifer Choak, who will be stepping down from her role as Vice President of the District 57 Board of Education. Jennifer's resignation is due to her announcement of an exciting new chapter as the Director of Government Relations for the Illinois Association of School Boards. While we are sad to see her leave this table, we are incredibly proud to see her step into a role where she will continue to advocate for students in public education, this time at the state and federal levels. Since joining the board in April 2021, Jennifer has contributed to important initiatives, including serving on the Strategic Plan Task Force and the development of the D-57 Portrait of the Graduate, helping ensure that every decision aligns with the values and skills we want for our students: adaptability, critical thinking, empathy, resilience, and collaboration. Jennifer has also been a passionate advocate for student voice, encouraging students to take part in leadership and board conversations. Her belief that students deserve a seat at the table has made our district stronger and more inclusive. Of course, one of the most exciting moments during Jennifer's tenure was the groundbreaking for the New Lincoln Middle School, an unforgettable milestone that symbolizes progress, community partnership, and a shared commitment to the future. She also helped guide the district through the successful Westbrook addition planning and took pride in seeing District 57 recognized at local, state, and national conferences for strong governance and innovation. Beyond her many accomplishments, Jennifer has brought a spirit of collaboration, curiosity, and care to her work. She has modeled what it means to listen deeply, to seek multiple perspectives, and to make decisions that serve every student every day. Jennifer, your leadership has left an indelible mark on this district. We will miss your thoughtful insights, your educator's heart, and your ability to bring people together for the common good. On behalf of the Board of Education, we thank you for your service to District 57 and to the Mount Prospect community. We wish you great success in your new role at IASB, and we take comfort knowing that even as you step away from this table, you will continue to champion the values that make our schools and our students shine. Congratulations, Jennifer, and thank you for all your service. Jen, did you want to say anything?
Yeah, I'll say, I'm going to read it too, just because, you know. So I will say, I will, I wouldn't be stepping down, except I have to. It is a conflict of interest for me to serve both as a school board member and also work for the Illinois Association of School Boards, so I will say that coming into this. I have, I am so incredibly grateful to all my fellow board members, past and present. The work that board members do is hard, but incredibly rewarding, especially when it's done alongside people who care deeply about the community they are serving. Even when we disagreed or needed to have hard conversations, I have been grateful for the way we respect one another's perspectives and our humanity. I am so glad that I've had the opportunity to serve alongside you. To the staff of D-57, thank you for the work you do each day. I know the hard work you put in and the amount of time, talent, and effort you give to this district, and I truly thank you for that. And to the students in this district, thank you for all that you do to make D-57 the best place it can be. From serving as students, board members, and on advisory councils, to participating in clubs and sports, to volunteering, to giving your all in the classroom, you are truly what makes D-57 a great place. And to the community, thank you for trusting me with this role. It was never my intention to leave before my tenure was up, but I'm excited to continue to serve our students, the community, and the members of this board in a different way in my new role at the Illinois Association of School Boards. So thank you so much.
Now it's time for a picture. Now it's time for a picture.
Thank you, and there were definitely plenty of pictures to choose from. So thank you, Heather. That was beautiful.
All right. Thank you again for all you've done to this board, Jennifer, and for every contribution you've given to the school districts that's been going to be missed. So we're moving on, we don't have any need for board discussion. I just have a quick update for the possible topics for future meetings. There are three items in the queue right now, and we're working on where best to include that in future agendas. Does anybody have any additions to that? That I, that queue? No? Okay. All right. So we have need for closed session, so I will entertain a motion to enter closed session for the purpose of collective negotiating matters where, between the public body and its employees or their representatives, deliberations concerning salary schedules or one or more classes of employees.
So moved.
Second.
Member Leto?
Let her take it, right?
Member Leto?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Vice President Choak?
Yes.
Member Dorner?
Yes.
Member Fay?
Yes.